From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors Meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Chuckston Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Ma'am President, please call it over.
Supervisor Gleason.
Yes.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Supervisor Maggert.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Here.
Outstanding, thanks. Supervisor Scrivner will be your show leader. A report on actions taken from closed session, let me take a chop at number 37. Before we begin this afternoon, we have an announcement to make, and that is that while meeting in closed session on item 37 in this morning's agenda, the Board of Supervisors voted unanimously on a 5-0 vote to appoint Mark Nations as interim county council. Mr. Nations has been an assistant county council since 2014, and before that, he was deputy chief, chief deputy county council for 10 years. In that time, he has ably represented the county in several important litigation matters. The county is extremely fortunate to have Mark Nations' outstanding legal skills and experience available to lead the office of county council. We're delighted to appoint him as interim county council, and we extend our congratulations and best wishes for success in this critical role. Mr. Nations, do you have anything to add?
No comment. Thank you, no, I'm just kidding. I wanted to thank you for your very kind thoughts, and I look forward to working with you.
5-0, Mark, that's pretty good, that's pretty good vote.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you very much for taking on responsibility. And to follow up on reports on actions taken in closed session on new interim county council.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the closed session agenda for this, after this morning's public session, items 38 and 39 on the CAO closed session agenda were heard, and there is no reportable action on either of those. And then, on the county council closed session agenda, items 40 through 44 were all heard, and there is no reportable action taken on any of those. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Before we begin the review of the consent agenda, I'd just like to make a quick announcement that Mr. Tackett, we're graced with your presence, and Ms. Patrick, thank you very much, two former county supervisors, great seeing you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Consent agenda, all items listed with a CA above the item number are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion if no member of the board or audience wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion is desired by anybody, the item will be removed, and the consent agenda will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board concerning the act, the item before action is taken. Going through consent agenda, under departmental requests, items 3 through, under planning and natural resources department, items 3 through 7. Under public works department, admin and engineering, items 9, 10, and 11. Under building and development, items 12 through 14. Under finance, items number 15. County administrative office, 17 through 19. And general services division, items 20. Mass for executive approval, items 21 through 25. Any member of the public wishing to pull an item off, come up forward, please. Let us know. What item?
Number 5, number 10, 11, 12, 13, 17, 18, and 20.
Okay, could you read those numbers again?
5, 10, or yeah, 5, 10, 11, 12, 13, 17, 18, and 20.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, I'd like to repeat that so that department heads are aware. Items 5, 10, 11, 12, 13, 17, 18, and 20.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to a public review. Anybody else? Public consent agenda. Seeing nobody, I'll bring it back to the board for a comment and a vote.
Motion on consent?
Second. Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all ayes.
Very much. Brings us to item number 1, under public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons who address the board on any matter not on this agenda but under the jurisdiction of the board. Board members may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed. They may ask a question for clarification, make a referral to staff for factual information, or request staff to get back, report back to the board at a later meeting. Also, the board may take action to direct the staff to place a matter of business on a future agenda. Speakers are limited to two minutes. Please state and spell your name before making a presentation. Anybody, any takers for public presentations? Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is David. I am a native of Bakersfield, and I love my hometown.
And your last name, sir?
David Abbasi.
Thank you, sir.
I'm a student of law and a medical marijuana expert. I know about regulations, the industry, and work with various advocacy groups like Kern Citizens for Patients Rights. Former county council was misleading you on medical marijuana law, environmental law, and election law. Many states have legalized medical and recreational marijuana, and it's not going to stop. How this is going to affect the county will be confusing. I can help you implement regulations that will give you control and maximize benefits. Consider the tax benefits, veterans with PTSD, public health and safety. There's a lot to be considered, and there's many different things that you can do when regulating cannabis activities within the county. So I would like to be of assistance and help to the board in moving forward, answering any questions, you know, and giving any feedback or suggestions in how to regulate or implement.
Thanks, sir.
That's my forte. I'll be contacting you guys.
Thank you. That member, that item is on the agenda, so actually it was not the right time for you to speak, but I'm glad you did.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. No, 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 that's quite all right. Thank you, and we'll get your message. Thank you. Any other takers? Sir?
David Fleuhart, Havelaw, First District. Last week, I mentioned the election, and I had mentioned three specific things that were really important: the presidency, this recreational marijuana thing, and proposition number 57. And I'd said that it could be the status quo and worse, or a boon to the future, and when I think of Prop 57 and this recreational marijuana thing, I look at it and I say, oh, man, that's, that's a perfect funding stream for employers training resource through a long battle of, you know, the sheriff, the DA, mental health, and probation. Eventually, it'd be a really good fundraising mechanism to fund the county, and most of that funds, I would go, would assume it'd come to the correctional, our community correctional partnership, and, you know, the CCP, they pay for a lot of things. I remember the DA had, had some problems, and, you know, the CCP is able to move money around and make things work out. So, so, you know, there's a positive point there. The only problem of this, this way of funding is there's collateral damage of victims. And, I don't know, the election, if there's one thing we could understand about the election, it was a change in momentum of doing things the old way versus doing something the new way. Now, I'm not sure how the new way is going to work, but we know that the old way is, I, a bunch of little things, but ultimately, the largest number is $20 trillion, and one way or another, your budget comes from the federal government. So, so I just want to have those remarks on the election and outcomes of elections, and everything looks good, and I know we win in the end, and it's on the wall, and all that good stuff. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, that brings us to the end of public presentations, board member announcements. Seeing none, we'll move right along to, we have some items pulled off, let's go through them. We have items, five, 10, 11, 12, 13, 17, 18, and 20. I believe, Mr. Fleuhart, you pulled those off. Would you like to make comments addressing those items?
Yeah, I'll keep it under three minutes. For all of them, I'm going to roll right through them. Number 5 is, is basically a contract from Kimberly Horn and Associates. It's basically raising the increase of the study by $65,000 to acknowledge, you know, growth in the, in the project. If you look at today's contract, number 2 is change in scope of work, and, and I just wanted to notice that, that, you know, that past contract in number 5 was being raised by 5,000, or by $65,000. I wanted to call number 10, $850,000 for the county, county, I guess, the front gates at a, at a dump, and I'd say, after you do all these improvements, I hopefully that ends up looking out, you know, the people there can make it look like the Bena front gates of the Bena dump. It's really cute how they've gotten deer there, and water wells, and everything, and I think it's really nice. Number 11, 12, and 13 basically is the signs and signals and electric cars, and I know in the future, green is, is a really good point to be taken, and I can't wait until those electrical cars from number 13 drive through the, the signs and signals of 12 and 11. And number 17 is basically $4 million, or $1.5 million that we've got in money, and I'm kind of confused by the 20-word description of it. But anyways, when I think of, you know, when I look at the discretionary money coming there, it's like $4 million, and I'm happy to hear and remember that this morning, we got another $9 million, and hopefully, I know I'm doing the math wrong, because that seems too good of luck, but, but ultimately, I know the DA is behind me. If we don't come up with that money one way or another in about eight months, she's going to be pointing her finger at libraries, and that scares me. I mean, I, I like her, and I don't like to argue with her, but that one scares me. So I'm enthusiastic about that extra money that we were finding quite recently. And number 18, and I, to be a little bit real sharp on this one, I don't know if it should really be a consent agenda item. It's talking about domestic violence services coming out of the DA's office. Honestly, she is the one person that is most capable of taking care of these services, but, but I just wonder. If the funding stream isn't there, then, then it gives more power to her argument when she's looking at libraries. So I'm really hoping that funding stream is there, because if not, she's going to be right here yelling at you about libraries. She said that perfectly clear. And on the brighter side, number 20 is fuel cards. And I remember yesterday at the countywide strategic initiatives, you guys had talked about fuel cards, and guess what? The day after, it's on the agenda, we've had the, the fire department figure out how to, to put, you know, fees for these mobile fueling things, and I just want to say that's quick work. There's a term that you guys say at CSI, which is fail fast. This is a succeed fast, right here, this number 20, fuel cards. And my time's pretty much up, thank you, and have a good day.
Thanks, sir. All the public for a public comment on items 5, 10, 11, 12, 13, 17, 18, and 20. I thought you might like to come down?
Not to talk about libraries, though. Good afternoon, thank you. I just wanted to thank Mr. Weeby from the CAO's office for putting this agenda item on, and I don't know if Mr. Fleuhart realized that the Family Justice Center, as you all know, because I've spoken with each of you individually over the last few years, has been a, a project of mine, a passion of mine, to bring better and more comprehensive domestic violence services to domestic violence victims in our county. I've been working on this for a long time. We are moving forward on this project, and I wish I could be up here and report to you today that in the last five years, that without a Family Justice Center, that domestic violence crimes have decreased in our county. But that would not be the truth. The problem continues to exist. It either grows or maintains the same levels of misdemeanor violence and felony violence, which often, which sometimes unfortunately results in the death of victims, leaving innocent children with one parent in custody and the other parent dead. So I want to thank the board for their continued support of this, this program, in, in the sense that we are moving forward and working on getting the doors to a Family Justice Center open here in Kern County, which will provide support to victims of domestic violence throughout the country. So I just wanted to thank you all for, for your support of this project, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Weeby. Seeing all the takers, I'll bring it back. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so done.
Thank you. I'd just like to comment on item number 5, that $65,000. This is an applicant-driven project. There will be no impact to the general fund, and the applicant will be fully funding that on item number 5. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I see no other takers for public presentation. I'll bring it back to the board. What we need to do technically is... Did you want to say something?
Yes, I'm pleased.
Okay, let me lay it out, lay it all out, and then you can speak. What we're going to do is we're going to take it one vote at a time on each item. We're going to go through item 5, and we'll call a vote on each particular item, because that's as a matter of protocol, a requirement. So we'll do that after Ms. Perez.
Thank you, Chairman. To our district attorney's comments about the Family Justice Center, I am very excited about some new funding that we've got through our CCP. I've had an opportunity to talk to our probation department. Incredibly innovative what's happening at this justice center. We're going to, of course, bring that opportunity to the board to strongly consider, but I think it's an excellent opportunity. It shows really remarkable innovation out of our, you know, new world of criminal justice reform. So hats off to you, Lisa. You know I'm a big fan, a big supporter of the department, so, and the justice center in particular. So, you know, look forward to that increase and improved partnership. And with that, motion on 5.
No motion. Second. Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all ayes.
Number 10.
Motion on 10.
Second. Please cast your votes.
I'll keep my mic on. Motion is approved, all ayes.
Number 11.
Motion on 11.
Second. Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all ayes.
Number 12.
Motion on 12.
Second. Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all ayes.
Number 13.
Motion on 13.
Second. Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all ayes.
Number 17.
I like this renewed partnership with Supervisor Couch. Motion on 17. Oh, no, that should be 18.
That will be item 17. I don't have the correct graphic.
That's it. There we go.
17.
Second. Please cast your votes.
Please reconfirm your vote. Thank, thank you. Motion is approved, all ayes.
Number 18.
Motion on 18.
Second. Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all ayes.
And item number 20.
Motion on 20.
Second. Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all ayes.
Thank you. Brings us to item number 8, proposed sole source consulting agreement with Kim Lee Horn and Associates, Inc., for preparation of an environmental impact report and staffing assistance for options to amend the Kern County zoning ordinance code to address land use regulations for medicinal and recreational cannabis.
Thank you, Chairman Gleason, members of the board. This matter is the execution of this agreement between the county and Kim Lee Horn for staffing assistance as well as assistance in preparing and processing an environmental impact report. As noted, we will be developing options for amending the Kern County ordinance for presentation and consideration by the Planning Commission and your board to address land use regulations for medicinal and recreational marijuana. This contract will be funded with general plan surcharge funding, which is outside general fund budget. Proposition 64 was passed by the California voters, and it now implements new pathways for the regulation and use of recreational as well as medical cannabis products. A summary of the provisions, it legalizes marijuana under state law, and it regulates the marijuana industry. It designates specific state agencies to license and regulate marijuana industry. It imposes a state excise tax of 15% on retail sales of marijuana, and estate cultivation taxes on marijuana of $9.25 per ounce of flowers, and $2.75 per ounce of leaves. It exempts medical marijuana from some taxation. It establishes packaging, labeling, advertising, and marketing standards and restrictions for marijuana products. Prohibits marketing and advertising marijuana directly to minors, but it does allow local regulation and taxation of marijuana, and it authorizes resentencing and destruction of records for prior marijuana convictions. This measure did change the name of the Bureau of Medical Cannabis Regulation, which has already been established, to the Bureau of Marijuana Control, makes it responsible for the regulation and licensing of non-medical marijuana businesses. So the state legislation last year had created that state agency and made them accountable for medical regulations. However, those regulations are required to be in place by January 1st, 2018. There are no licenses being issued by the state under this new requirement until that agency goes through their regulatory process, and those regulations take effect January 1st, 2018. A local approval or license is required before a state license is issued for either medical or non-medical cannabis cultivation, distribution, or sale, which means that if the county decided they did not want these types of things, the state would not issue a license. So it's very clear in the regulations that were passed last year, and the regulations that have been passed with Proposition 64. The county could completely ban marijuana-related businesses, however, they cannot ban the transportation of marijuana through their jurisdictions, so that was specifically stated in Proposition 64. The new state tax structure, local cities will receive our share of the sales tax revenue, I'm sorry, our counties will receive the sales tax revenue that we have, and we can adopt additional taxes. I would like to note that this is the only agricultural crop in California that requires a specific state license. While agriculture is regulated for things like pesticides, there is no other crop that requires a license before you plant it in California. So this is a very unique type of agricultural operation, and we will be looking at it from that perspective. Staff will be conducting workshops and public discussions, as well as stakeholder meetings to develop ordinance proposals in cooperation with county council, including potential taxation suggestions for consideration, and will prepare an environmental impact report to look at the impacts. One of the most important impacts in regards to cultivation is the use of water. These crops use more water than other crops that we are familiar with, and as you know, we have some very restricted basins. In addition, we are going to be working closely with not just county council, but with the fire, the sheriff, the DA, the public defender, and public health on their comments and concerns. The social and community concerns are a very important part of this process. We already currently have about 27 dispensaries operating in the unincorporated county, but a subject of your board's ongoing legal actions and complaints from community members. At this time, we do have a moratorium on the establishment of new dispensaries. Staff will be asking and working with county council to bring forward an extension of that moratorium at the appropriate time, because we want to allow for this process to be completed without having to deal with new locations and new operations. For the public's benefit, and for those who are here who want to be part of this process and notified of this process, they can send an email to my department, Planning and Natural Resources, at planning@co.kern.ca.us. So while at some point your board will be reviewing information, first, this ordinance needs to go through a public process and discussion, needs to go to the Planning Commission for hearings for a recommendation to your board, and the planning department will, along with county council's office, but the planning department will be managing that public process. The schedule is to have proposals and an EIR for your board's consideration by the end of 2017, in advance of the regulations going into effect. This consultant contract includes assistance for staff in conducting these public processes and developing the ordinance alternatives, as well as the EIR. I'm available for questions, and it's recommended that your board approve the sole source agreement with Kim Lee Horn Associates in an amount not to exceed $320,400 and authorize the chairman to sign.
Thank you, Zoe Hart. Let's go to the public and see what the public has to say. Anybody in the public wishing to make comment on this particular issue? Item number 8. Now's your chance, David.
Sorry, guys, I didn't, I didn't know that this was going to be on the agenda today.
Mr. Abbasi, would you spell your last name?
Yes, it's Abbasi, A-B-B-A-S-I.
Thank you.
So, again, I just wanted to offer any help or assistance in drafting regulations that, again, will give you guys the control and the maximizing the benefits that you can receive from regulating public health, again, safety. These things should be considered, as well as, you know, the people that truly need it for medicinal purposes, whether you choose to allow it for both medicinal and/or recreational. I have suggestions on how to regulate both, but my focus, my emphasis is on the medical side of it, as there's extensive research showing, again, that it does have medicinal benefits for a wide range of ailments, illnesses, and diseases, age-related, and otherwise. It's pretty remarkable stuff, but nonetheless, I'm hoping that the county takes a position where they're going to be sensible about regulating versus opposing or trying to ban, as they have in the past. I would like to mention that I believe that the moratorium that is in effect now currently is illegal, as the county has exercised these options in the past for the same reasons. Despite that, I think the county would be best advised to work with the community into implementing something that would be acceptable for everyone involved, to avoid any further unnecessary expenditures, lawsuits, opposition, and other types of things. And again, I will be contacting each individual board member, your offices, to extend my help if needed or wanted, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Abbasi.
Good afternoon, David Fleuhart, Havelaw, First District. Here we are, finally, after three years, we've gotten to this point where we're looking at it. It's a change of the direction that, that the county is looking into. First thing I'd like to, to recognize is, is the war on drugs has failed slowly, and there's a lot of collateral damage lying around in our society. But we're at a new exciting part or stage in our bureaucracy, so when we think about this, we should think quite heavily on it. I'd mentioned earlier that, that item number 2 is change in scope of the work. What you'll probably find is that marijuana, like Mr. Scrivner has said, in the past, it's a moving target. When you think of marijuana, also, I'd put this out there, is reading an article earlier in the week, Mr. Maggert, or yes, Mr. Maggert through the, through the chair, you said that this is an opportunity to get a mandate from our county, and, and I totally agree with him. So this study should widen and... So this study should widen in scope, and when you look at marijuana, there's, I call them weedisms, kind of like truth of the, of the, of the, I don't know, it's weedisms. Anyways, mandate, weedisms, I would say that one aspect of the study needs to look at the county's position towards decriminalizing it from a Class A heroin status drug, and I'd also want to know the position of Kern County towards marijuana's position in the, you know, Federal Veterans Association. I mentioned it last week, I know appreciation weeks over, but, you know, it'd be really good if Kern County did the lead part and did the L of the leads and be a leader and come up with a letter saying, hey, you know, this is kind of crazy for a Class A scheduled drug, and, you know, veterans, their rights are pretty well hammered. So the scope of the study, I imagine, should become wider, and hopefully they'll look at how to reassess, redefine, and retool marijuana to be a bonus, to be something other than the status quo, which I mentioned in the presentations, is a great funding stream for the, for the county, except it has a little bit of a, you know, a victims' ratio built into it to work in that whole ETR, CCP, share, blah, blah, blah. Anyways, making an aspect of the solution said, and in the past, I know and remember, Mrs. Perez and you yourself, Nick, had mentioned that we need to think outside the box on this one, okay? Because otherwise, it's just status quo, and like I said, we're 20 trillion down, and this needs to become the solution. There's a saying, another weedism. I don't know if marijuana will save the world, but it's the only thing that can. Now, it's in your hands to decide where you want this, this to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Hey, folks, how you doing? My name's TGS Pizito. I'm a local expert on medical marijuana. I've testified in jury trials in regards to marijuana issues for cases in front of juries and judges, and at any rate, I have some things to mention and comment in regards to the environmental impact report and approving medical marijuana in regards to regulation. A couple of little things I wanted to point out is the momentum that the marijuana industry already has. Recently, before the vote came down, there are three major hydroponic companies in the world, General Hydroponics, Botanic Care, and Govita. These companies were bought out by Monsanto for upwards of half a billion dollars. Within 30 days, Monsanto sold to the company Bayer for the sum of $400 billion cash. So you can kind of see the trends of the type of companies that are going to be entering into this space. It's going to be a very, very big industry. One thing to consider with the new laws in Prop 64, that it's going to be available for people 21 and over, and it's going to decriminalize possession up to an ounce, all the way. Right now, it's about a hundred dollar fine. With Prop 64, it's going to be just like having a beer in your pocket. So, you know, I'm saying that to say this, not regulating this, I mean, and I'm talking regulation to a T. Kern County should set the bar for the rest of the state. If you don't, it will put it in the hands of young kids, more than it would if it was regulated. For instance, if we still made beer in our basements and sold it to our friends, you could imagine that it might be easier for kids to get beer. Now, they have to check IDs at stores, and there's lots of regulations and processes in place to keep it out of the hands. So in saying that, I would encourage you to consider regulating this as though it was alcohol, something to where it's going to be trackable, taxable, put in strict packaging laws to where there's in-between the grower and the, and the distribution center or dispensary that we can track packages and implement tax processes. The other thing is, I'm sorry, your name was?
Ms. Smith.
Mrs. Smith mentioned that growing marijuana takes...
Zoe, I'm sorry.
Sorry about that, and I'm sorry. I'm bad with names, and she doesn't have a big sign, so anyways, the, she'd mentioned that it takes a lot more water to grow this crop, and in fact, the way that it's grown most commonly in Colorado uses less water, actually a tenth of the amount. In a hydroponic system, it recycles water. So, you know, with strict regulations on growing operations and the different types of dispensaries or sales avenues in regards to medical or 21 and over or delivery system, those are things to identify, those different things, and make specific rules and different license fees. A couple of other things to mention before I go is, in regards to the license fees and the local taxes, I wouldn't give any breaks. I would definitely make it well worth citizens' time and efforts and really benefit our county as much or more than it would benefit the state. You know, I think that we could use the money, and I think if we're creative, we do a really good job of regulating it, that we can really tighten up this deal and keep it safe for the public and for the people accessing it. Lastly, there are things when you're looking at Prop 64 that I'd like to point out. It has terminology in it that allows you to issue a license to a dispensary to be able to smoke on premises. I, I don't think that that should be put into anything anytime soon. There's not currently a way to measure the amount of marijuana that you have in your system like there is alcohol. For instance, you can go to a bar and drink one beer, and you can be okay to drive because there's a measurement in place. If there was an opportunity to smoke marijuana on premises at a place, there's no measurable level, so basically one hit and you're DUI. So when you're looking at your environmental impact report, I think those things should be duly noted, and maybe if you draft something or with the help of our group, draft something that makes sense, we have to be sensitive to those things like DUI and smoking on premises and smoking in public. I think those things are very important in regard to public safety and need to be thought about when issuing these licenses. Until the future comes when there are measurable measures, then maybe start issuing more licenses later, but for now, kind of looking at every single aspect of this, what's currently happening, and coming up with reasonable solutions. The benefit, the patients, the end users, or whatever you can call them, the government and the places who will be dispensing it. So that's it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Chair.
Yep.
Anybody else?
Good afternoon. My name is Delia D. Dominguez. I had not realized this was on the agenda today, so, and I have a very bad voice, but I felt I had to come up since I heard the other people speak. I didn't vote for recreational marijuana, and yes, marijuana is a medicine. It does help certain illnesses and situations that people are physically in. However, where I live, within walking distance, I believe there's about five medical marijuana establishments, which is, are a great concern to me, because our children walk in front of these places, and people are just smoking out there, and I always wonder, do all these people have a permit to smoke, and why are they smoking on the sidewalk? And I'd also like to remind you that not everyone smokes for recreation. If you are at home in your yard with your children or your grandchildren, and next door, the smoke is whiffing into your yard, do you want your children to smell that and take that in? Do our children, don't our children and our parents have a choice? Do you want your children to have that in their system because your neighbor is smoking it? So please, I understand that some counties can choose, counties can choose whether they will have it or not, and it's my understanding that Kern County chose not. It didn't pass in our county. I could be mistaken, but that's what I had heard on the news. So please put in place good regulation. I think they're very important. How are they going to grow this? I can tell you next door, there's a patch, or rather, a big garden of marijuana where I can see when I pick my lemons. And I can tell you, even though it's not being smoked, those plants have a very strong smell, which I do not appreciate. So please remember that not everyone is a smoker, and families who take care of their children want them to grow up responsibly, intelligently, and in the right way. So whatever you decide to do, please put in good regulation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dominguez. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public here and bring it back to the board for comment and consideration. Ms. Perez.
Thank you, Chairman. Director Oviedo, would you explain again or restate the purpose of the EIR in layman's terms so that the public understands what it is that you're recommending this board to consider?
Supervisor Perez through the chair. The EIR is only part of this process. Your board made a referral for the Planning Department in consultation with, you know, working with county council and others, to come back to you with options on how and we should regulate this issue. Should we ban it? Our zoning ordinance does not clearly say what we're going to do, and I would let, I defer to county council, Mark Nations now, to talk about where the county actually stands. So we're going to go through a public process, working with the people who have come to speak, to look at all the various options on how this could be regulated, what are the impacts to us, what is specific to Kern County's needs, what do the people who live here want to have happen? And then in the environmental impact report, we're going to look at all the environmental impacts of that, and we're going to provide a recommendation to the Planning Commission, and then the Planning Commission will pick and choose and make a recommendation to your board in regards to what we're going to do about the regulation of both, at this point, medical marijuana and what is being called non-medical marijuana or recreational marijuana.
Thank you. Would you say that the EIR is a tool to ban or a tool to limit? I know that it could be, but going into the process, is there a policy consideration that is, that would potentially drive the reasoning or paradigm of the environmental impact report?
The project description for the environmental impact report is going to cover the full range of options, everything from banning it to regulations to allow it. So it's going to have a full range of options. The, the environmental impacts from banning it, the courts have ruled that we must do an environmental impact report. As an example, if we ban it, we need to look at, will that increase the traffic and the trips for people to drive from the county into other cities or into counties? Will that increase truck trips? Will that increase emissions? That's just an example of the environmental impacts of the decision-making process.
I see. It appears to me as though waiting on this issue is not, I think, the best position for the county to be in, per se. Whatever decision this board makes at the end of the day, and I think it is varied and extremely complicated, as the regulations are still unfolding, we don't see them in their current form today as they will be or should be a year from now, and we don't really know what they'll look like from the state. But the State Association of Counties, CSAC, is in a very new position today than we were two weeks ago, before Prop 64 passed. Within the CSAC organization, 58 counties take very differing positions on this issue, from, as you stated, banning entirely to proper regulations and the appropriate configuration thereof. So it makes sense to me that we would make a consideration, the environmental impacts in particular, given that our last attempt to regulate this product ended in a loss at the court level because of our failure to consider environmental impacts. So it does not appear at this time as though we can continue to deal with this matter as it is in front of us without a strong environmental consideration. It seems to me to be an intelligent approach. I just want to ensure to the public that there is no policy consideration at this time, whether this board or this county is going to ban this product, notwithstanding the traffic or transportation issues to the county, or it will reasonably regulate or any possibility thereof. Those, of course, that policy consideration will have to take into mind, sales tax revenue potential, impacts on the criminal justice system, our ability for our sheriff and law enforcement to properly manage and regulate this product should this county proceed in that fashion. Those considerations will be made at a time when the environmental impacts have been considered, if I understand correctly. So I want to make that clear for the public, that what is being, what is being asked of this board today is to whether or not we will consider the environmental impacts. We've already been dinged legally, if you will, for not having done so through a measure before I was on this board, but certainly it seems wise and prudent to move forward with the environmental impact report, and then the policy considerations of which I know our law enforcement officials and many others will weigh in on that matter and will be able to do so through the public hearing process. So this seems like an intelligent approach to me. I'd like to move forward with it. I know CSAC is in the process of determining what it is our member organizations or counties, how we'd like to proceed in a way that is resourceful for counties and does not leave counties in the dark when this matter is rolled out very quickly. So thank you for your work, Director Oviedo. I would make a motion to proceed on staff's recommendation, but certainly would like to hear from my colleagues.
Thank you. Supervisor Couch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question about other or cities within Kern County that may be looking at taking similar steps and providing them with an opportunity to either piggyback onto this study, or maybe back up and say, are they, will they have to do their own particular environmental study? Will they have to, what's their baseline? Will they have to wait till we conclude ours and establish whatever that policy is going to be? How do they move forward? And how do we move forward knowing what they're going to do?
Supervisor Couch through the chair. I am reaching out to the cities. Obviously, every city is in a slightly different position. California City, for example, on the other side of the county, has already taken an action, adopted an ordinance. It was not challenged, so they're done to allow cultivation in greenhouses in a, you know, particular number. The city of Bakersfield has a voter, Mr. Nations will have to give me the right words, but they've been submitted a petition, and the city council has to decide, did they put it to a vote, or do they just adopt an ordinance? Every city is in a slightly different position, but I am reaching out to the cities to see if there are some that this would benefit. Because of the nature of this type of environmental impact report, we will be looking at what the cities are doing in order to have a sufficient environmental impact report. For example, if we decided, for example, that dispensaries, there's been talk today about dispensaries, the CIR is going to look at everything, processing of raw materials, creating large-scale edible operations, transport of bulk marijuana grows. We have warehouses that store such commodities, and people have come to me and said, what about storing them here? All of those things are going to be on the table. I want to be clear, this is not about, just about dispensaries. This is about the fact that the, in the state of California now, you can legally, publicly grow marijuana if you get a license starting in 2018. And the default is, if we do nothing, then the state will issue licenses for all of those kinds of things. So we have an opportunity to look at all of that. So, we have an opportunity to look at all of that, and we are going to have to, as Supervisor Couch points out, coordinate with the cities who may already be thinking about these types of land uses.
Supervisor Maggott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of things I want to make sure that we are thinking about as the process continues. But, Mr. Nations, could you first start with giving us a brief history, you are known for your brevity, so I'm sure it'll be brief, of where we are with regard to regulating what has heretofore been medical marijuana and how we got here, both the dispensary side and the cultivation side? People like Ms. Dominguez, I think, have some confusion. I'd like to make sure we clear that up.
Currently, the county regulates medical, the cultivation of medical marijuana by limiting it to 12 plants on any legal parcel of record. As far as dispensaries, the county has an ordinance on the books that the Fifth District Court of Appeal mandated be reinstated, which regulates dispensaries as pharmacies. However, we have instituted a moratorium to make way, to give us the breathing room, a timeout, so to speak, so we can do the environmental work and develop a comprehensive approach to this, given the passage of Proposition 64. So, on the dispensary side, any dispensary that was in operation prior to, I think it was May 5th of this year, is allowed to continue operating, provided they are operating in compliance with the existing law. On the cultivation side, anybody can grow up to 12 plants on a legal parcel of record. No one is allowed legally to open a dispensary after May 5th, and as to those dispensaries, we are seeking legal remedies.
Thank you, Mr. Nations. Next, I want to talk about for a moment how we're going to go about gathering public input as the process goes forward. There is, there certainly is a vocal constituency in Kern County that wants marijuana to be as prevalent as it can be and to be regulated and to be made mainstreams, if possible, I think. But there are many other people who do not share that opinion. So, Ms. Ovial, how will this process lend itself to public input, so that when the public hears of or reads of this meeting, they can have some description of what to
Supervisor Maggott through the chair, we will be working with our consultant that hopefully you will provide today. We will have public notices for workshops, but one of the focused intentions is that I will be going to the communities that already have dispensaries, that are already vocally concerned about this, to have special workshops in those communities. So, there will be two opportunities. One, we will do public notification in the newspaper, as well as I'm assembling a mailing list of community groups, chambers of commerce, and others, which we already have those mailing lists. And then, the second way will be is that we are actually taking the list of places where there are dispensaries already, where we've already received concerns from people, and I will be having special workshops there to make sure that those people have a special opportunity to share their real-life experiences about what's working and not working. In all fairness, I will also be reaching out to the dispensary owners. I will be notifying all of them. For this hearing, I have notified the legal staff that represents those dispensaries. They appreciated that notification. It will be an open process, and we will look for other opportunities to make sure that people have access.
There were those who were adamant that dispensaries, brick-and-mortar dispensaries, would not be a magnet for crime, would not have a negative impact on neighborhoods. But if you are near a brick-and-mortar dispensary that has had everything from murder to robbery to torture to all kinds of things that have happened inside there, inside some of those places, a brick-and-mortar dispensary is of great concern. So, will the EIR also consider the potential impacts of if we would have, rather than brick-and-mortar dispensaries, whether or not we would have a mobile dispensary delivery mechanism in place?
Supervisor Maggott, we will. However, Proposition 64 specifically states, and the state laws state now, that you must have a dispensary in order to have mobile delivery. So, as an example, if we had no dispensaries in Kern County and there were mobile deliveries, all the sales tax would go to the other county, and we would still have the, you know, whatever, we'll look at that, the externalities of mobile deliveries, which could include things that the sheriff has raised, such as theft, they deal in cash, and other sorts of externalities. It's unfortunate, but that was the linkage that was made for the taxation purposes for mobile deliveries.
Well, I'd like you to vet and describe to us as the process goes forward, if that brick-and-mortar dispensary might be regulated as to where it's located, but then those mobile deliveries might emanate from that one location.
Great. Thank you.
Supervisor Scrivener.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Ovial, you said that you expect to have the EIR back to the board by the end of 2017. Was that what you?
That is correct, along with recommendations for the ordinance.
Okay, along with recommendations, thank you. And, Mr. Nations, how much longer do we have with the moratorium that disallows any new dispensaries from opening?
I believe the current moratorium expires in May of this year, and my recommendation to, to planning has been that we bring, we have something back to you, because it's going to, it's going to require quite a bit of attention by the fall of 2017.
Okay, something back to us by the fall of 2017, so faster than the timeline that Ms. Ovial just suggested?
Correct.
And because, are we able to extend that moratorium again?
Yes.
Okay, so it could be extended in May?
Correct.
To give us more time? Okay, that's what I was interested in. Okay, thank you.
I believe we have, we have a motion on the table.
Second.
And a second, please, cast your votes.
Motion is approved. All ayes.
Thank you. Brings us to item number 16 under the County Executive Office. Proposed Resolution to Support Tahone Indian Tribe's Desire to Establish Tribal Headquarters of Community Center at 4941 David Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Senior Analyst Alan Crowder will be briefing you on this item.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, the MOU before you is revised from its initial form on October 11th, when your board considered it. Very briefly, it calls for an agreement for the county to offer and be, to provide and be reimbursed for services to tribal property at 4941 David Road, which they intend to use for tribal headquarters and community center. At the time of, of the initial consideration, your board expressed several concerns that the tribe was eager to resolve. We believe that the revised MOU responds thoroughly and very clearly to those concerns. I'd like to enumerate them for you. As before, the MOU requires the tribe to pay for certain public services that would generally be funded by property taxes that the tribe, services the tribe may receive from the county, such as law enforcement, fire protection, public health inspections. Also, as before, the MOU pledges the tribe to adopt tribal law codes that are identical or at least as stringent as county standards for solid waste disposal, building and construction. Perhaps one of the greatest concerns was that the MOU needed to clearly state that this is for non-gaming use of property. Section 2, and I'd like to just quote Section 2, the initial sentence, "The tribe will use the property for non-gaming purposes only. Those uses shall be consistent and compatible with the tribe's establishment of a tribal headquarters and community center, such as cultural, religious, healthcare, administrative, and recreational uses." That's fairly clear. Also, the revised MOU requires, after 12 months, a traffic impact study. If the impact is determined to be at least 10% increase, then the tribe and the county need to negotiate a mutually acceptable traffic mitigation fee to make the county whole for, for increased maintenance of, of whatever areas have the increased traffic. It also imposes the same requirements. If a future non-gaming use of the property should vary from its use as a tribal headquarters or community center down the road, if they do something that, it's compatible, but it's a fairly substantial change in use, that would, again, trigger a traffic impact study. Another large concern of, of your boards was the term of the agreement. The former agreement lasted, was it five years, county council? One year, it was one year. This agreement, that tribe was eager to strike a longer-term agreement, as is your board, so the agreement before you provides for a 20-year term, then negotiation of a successor MOU. Neither party may terminate the MOU for the first five years. At the beginning of the sixth year, both parties will negotiate a clause enabling termination of the agreement before the 20-year term expires. That would be a mutually agreed-upon-out clause, basically. Both sides would have to agree to the terms for it to go into effect. At that point, also, both parties may mutually agree to postpone negotiation of the termination clause from year to year if they decide to exercise that option. So, this leaves, it's, it's, what's in place is a 20-year agreement and a successor MOU. Anything short of that would have to be mutually agreed upon. Nobody can unilaterally terminate the agreement. Also, both the, the MOU and the attached resolution of support for the use of this property state that they do not commit the county to discretionary approvals that may be necessary to establish a tribal community center and headquarters on the property. This is only an agreement for services. The resolution also states that it is not an expression of support for any future gaming-related use on other lands that might be held in trust for the tribe. Also, the resolution makes a finding that approval of the resolution does not constitute an approval of a project for purposes of the California Environmental Quality Act, and this is legally needed in order for the, for the, to avoid triggering an environmental study just for tribal headquarters. So, we recommend that your board at top, adopt the attached resolution of support, approve the attached MOU defining reimbursement terms for county services to the tribe, and making the findings and determinations regarding SEQA. Authorize the filing of a notice of exemption from SEQA with the county clerk, and authorize the chairman to sign the MOU. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Crowder. Appreciate, I see no questions from the board, so let's open the public hearing and see what the public has to say. Anybody wishing to comment on this? Would you raise your hand if you wish to comment one way or another, pro or anti, your way? Raise your hand. I see two people, okay? Come on, Adam.
Octavio Scobedo, tribal chairman for Tahone Indian Tribe.
Could you please spell your last name?
E.S.C.O.B.E.D.O. I just want to thank the board for all the discussion and negotiation in good faith of the MOU, and understand it is in good faith, and really, the excellent description provided today about the non-gaming parcel, and for the consideration, whether it's for or against. I just want to thank you for your time and everybody's work on that. And really, you're going to hear from people suggesting things and making statements about questioning our legitimacy. As a tribe, we are the only federally-recognized tribe in Kern County as of right now, and there's, they're going to try to state old reports and old investigations that were found, where there was no ill will found with any of that. And I just want to reiterate that, that we are the only federally-recognized tribe in Kern County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Name is Frank, last name is Reina, R.E.I.N.A., and I want to thank all of you for your due diligence that you've put in, and you did put some time in. I do appreciate that. That being said, I still have some concerns, and I'd like to just take, you give me two minutes, right? That's fine. All right.
Sure, you can talk.
All right. If I was to draft something, and I was looking at the big picture, and I was wanting to do something, and I think you've answered part of it, but I'm not saying you've answered all of it. I was looking at the future that you have here, it's talking about the, the support, it has to be non-gaming, as I understand it. I won't say in perpetuity, but it's going to be hard to get out of it, that's what I'm saying. But if I was doing the big picture, this is me, and there's an old guy I used to listen on radio, Paul Harvey, he put together a lot of stuff. I used to enjoy him. If this was the big picture, then what I wanted to do is make sure I had a foot in the door. Two miles south, one mile west, is supposed, 305-acre gaming deal. It's down the road, but it's gaming. The big picture would be this, they would come a point somewhere that you might need off-campus parking. Hmm, gosh, valley parking, they'd do that all the time. Wow. Just a thought. I don't know. Looking at a couple of other items, the gentleman that just spoke has said that there's some old stuff, maybe years ago, I don't know. But there are some package, the package each one of you have, I gave to the clerk earlier this afternoon. You have, you have that, because I have received mails that you have received, the clerk has received, this last week, that is, maybe after your decision was made. And one was the original Tahone tribe, the kid, I can't even pronounce the name. They sent you a letter in the last day or two also. And then, there was a group that was out of town, for whatever reason that makes, I don't, I don't understand, except if it's truth, it's truth. It doesn't make a difference if it's out of town or not. And what I want you to really consider is truth. So, I'm not, I'm not, I, I can't say the reason, but you have letters that's been going on since 1995 that is coming out, and one group got usurped by another. The group that was usurped had no intentions of going for a gaming casino, nor the 22 other supposedly tribes that's in the area. But the one that was introduced to the federal government by the one that was usurped is out of the cold, not recognized, yet they made the application in '95. But we have one here that's made an application subsequent to that date, and it was approved. It could not be because they have, have a joint memorandum of understanding with a group of people that's got $1.5 billion that's been funding this for a long time. That probably is not there at all. It's just probably a figment of my imagination. So, up until this point, I haven't been talking about the gambling, and I won't. But I thank you for your work, and I just want to make sure that the people who made the application know that they are being watched. And if they think that this was a large group that came after them this time, no. But we are going really fast, there's going to be lots of folks, we got well over 3,000 now. I expect in a year, we probably have 30,000. If I die, it's not suicide. That's all I can say. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Larry Moxley, representing Tahone Tribe. We're going to ask that you stay focused on exactly the action that staff has brought forward. It's very direct and, and non-complex, asking, we ask you to support staff's recommendation, number one. Number two, we have counsel here to answer any questions that, that you may have based on comments that were just made. It's a little troubling, the, the last comments that were made. I don't like to be threatened, I don't like to feel like someone's saying, people that I represent are threatening them. I got that inclination, and I'm offended by it personally. I think county council can help you on the legitimacy, on the research they've done. Our council is here to address any concerns in that area you may have. I can assure you, as the chairman spoke, we are the only federally-recognized and approved tribe- tribe in the county. End of the story. So all the chatter about that is just that, it's just smoke. So we ask you, if you would, please consider the staff report and approve that, and if you have other questions, we do have our counsel here that is prepared to answer those. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Thank you. We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for comment and considerations. Supervisor Perez.
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Nations, could you comment on the assertions that were made here? We had some on either side. I think it would be helpful for you to help us understand, is this a federally recognized tribe? Is that issue resolved? What is appropriate for this board to be considering today, because we heard some accusations and what I think are threats to highly inappropriate? But if you could help this board understand what's appropriately before this board to consider today, I think that would be helpful.
Yes, Supervisor Perez through the chair. When they talk about federal recognition of an Indian tribe, what they mean is that they are listed in the federal register. I have in my hand the federal register for May of 2016, and what it says is, "The listed Indian entities are acknowledged to have the immunities and privileges available to federally recognized Indian tribes by virtue of their government-to-government relationship with the United States, as well as the responsibilities, powers, limitations, and obligations of such tribes." Therein follows after that statement, a listing of hundreds of Indian tribes, including the Apache, the Navajo, the Pueblo, all of the ones that we are easily recognized, that we're familiar with, and then listed among them is the Tahone Indian Tribe. They are a federally recognized Indian tribe. There is no dispute about that. Any challenge to that has to be made through the administrative and court process in the federal courts, in the federal, through the Department of the Interior. I don't believe anybody has ever done that, and certainly none of the people that have raised this issue have ever done it. And so the only legal fact that's before your board today on this issue is that they are in fact a federally recognized Indian tribe. What you're being asked to do today is twofold. One is a resolution of support for their desire to establish their tribal headquarters at 4941 David Road, and also to enter into the MOU so that they will be required to reimburse the county once the property is taken into trust for any public services that are rendered to them at their request. I think it's important to understand why this is not involve any gaming. The tribe has, has two applications pending before the Department of Interior. One is this one, to take this land into trust for non-gaming purposes for use as a tribal and community center. And the other is the property in Metler, which they have an option on, in which they are seeking it to be taken into trust for gaming purposes. Those two processes are completely different. They're governed by different regulations. This one is, they're both in process, but this one I think is much further along than the other one. So they have, I have read their application to have this property on David Road be taken into trust, and it is clearly stated in there, it is for non-gaming purposes. And they have committed in the MOU to use it for only non-gaming purposes. They could not, for example, take their application or this MOU that is being presented to you today and use it for their other trust application. That would be highly inappropriate and it would be rejected out of hand because they're completely separate processes. So that's what you're being asked to do today.
Thank you, Mr. Nations. With that said, I'd make a motion on staff's recommendation, so.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you.
Mr. Maggott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When we last met, I asked for a number of clarifications and amplifications of certain issues within the agreement that was before us. Those have been made to my satisfaction. I clearly said that I would not stand in the way of the development of a cultural center or an opportunity to be able to deliver services to a group of folks that I think are in desperate need of certain of those social services. So in light of that and the adjustments that were made, I'll second the motion.
Can I ask a question to someone? How many members of the Tahone Tribe live in this county? Do we have an answer for that?
Hi, my name's Catherine Montez Morgan. I'm the chairperson for the enrollment committee. We have 823 tribal members in our, in our tribe, and the majority of those live in Kern County. We have people that live in Taff, we have people that live in, you know, all over Delano. So, yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We have a motion, a second, please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
Are we ready to adjourn to closed session?
So moved.
Yeah, we need a closed session this afternoon up in the point room? Yes.